Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. Floor is open for questions, comments, or any corrections.
I have none.
When I was on vacation, I abstained.
No questions, comments, or corrections. At this time, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $574,151.25. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated September the 5th, 2017, in the amount of $574,151.25.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments. Ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:01 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. Board, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, August 21st, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I'll abstain.
There's no questions or comments or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, you have 26 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $760,790.98. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated September the 5th, 2017, in the amount of $760,790.98.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have several items. The first is a resignation letter from the Fire Prevention Bureau. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the letter into the record, please.
Chief Cheshire, I received notice today of a new opportunity with a local hospital. I have accepted this opportunity and begin full-time employment with them effective September 11, 2017. I would like to sit down with you and discuss an exit strategy. I have open inspections and projects that I would like to complete, and also, I would like to offer to assist with a handoff to a replacement, if you would like me to. I also need to return any equipment that was issued to me. Please contact me at your earliest convenience, so we might meet. I was able to apply for this position because of the opportunity that you afforded me for over the last three years of working with you, for which I will be forever grateful. Thank you again, and I look forward to hearing from you. Dave Carlson.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the resignation letter from Dave Carlson.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Board, we passed out another letter from the Parks Department. I want to go ahead, it's not on the agenda, but I want to go ahead and approve it. So I'll have the clerk read it into the record, please, Dan.
Dear Mayor, Clerk of Treasure, Board of Works, Claire Cathcart resigned from her position at the Hornet Park Community Center on Sunday, July 16, 2017. Her resignation was due to her overwhelming college schedule, as well as her own personal schedule, not allowing her the time and energy needed for her to continue working here at the center. And this was signed by Angel and Tom.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have no comments, thank you.
No.
Ask for a motion to approve the resignation letter from Claire Cathcart.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, we have a brief presentation on the telestaff interlocal user agreement between Wayne Township Fire Department and the City of Beech Grove. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Tonight, I have Jim Pierce. He's our operations chief. He's going to come up and explain the agreement with telestaff and Wayne Township.
Good evening, Board. Excuse my tardiness. We had an emergency maintenance issue right when I was leaving the station. What you have in front of you is a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, between us and the Wayne Township Fire Department in regards to our telestaff program. We currently have that hosted downtown, and with an upgrade, it's going to be moved out to Wayne Township and become kind of a cloud-based type system. And this just is a MOU between us and them, as far as them hosting our service and our data on their system. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you. I did send this over to Craig, and he's looked over it, and I believe no issues with the document.
Minor changes.
Okay. Which I think we, I took care of. Okay. So with that, is there any questions about the agreement?
Didn't we do something similar to this a couple of months ago, or something?
Um, not for...
Because I want to say that Indianapolis was going to charge us like 20 grand, or something.
Oh, we introduced it, and that was, yeah, that was one of their, one of our options was for them to host it, or have telestaff host it themselves, which would cost us an enormous amount of money. Where this particular arrangement's just going to cost us some licensing fees, and they'll host it on their server for us. So it's quite a bit cheaper than either having it hosted downtown, or have telestaff themselves host it.
Any other questions?
So, all there is is just licensing fees?
Right. We pay an annual licensing fee to telestaff for the software product itself.
Right.
And then, the equipment that Wayne Township's had to accrue to put us on their system, which is a server license, they want us to pay for that, and, which we did. And that's only like a three or four-year expense. It's not an annual expense. It's whenever they update those.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the telestaff interlocal user agreement between Wayne Township, Marion County, and the City of Beech Grove Fire Department.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries.
Okay.
If we sign this right now, will you just, will you carry it over to Wayne?
Yes. Yeah, I'll take care of it. If you'll go ahead and take care of the signatures. Thank you.
Jim, come forward.
I see what you're talking about now. Getting signatures on this.
I'll just let him get the copy.
Yeah.
I'll just make sure to get the copy.
Next order of business, Board, is a Okra Planning Grant Agreement between the State of Indiana and the City of Beech Grove. This is a planning grant that the city has, was notified that they received from Okra Office of Community and Rural Affairs through the State of Indiana for $40,000. It is to plan for the facade replacement on Main Street. So, this was expected to receive, to be received, and we did receive it. So I want to thank the Clerk's Office for meeting with the grant writer, and I want to thank the Council for their action in this, and the Redevelopment Commission. Both bodies contributed $2,500 to the match. So the only thing we have left to do with this is to sign the planning grant agreement. So I'll defer to the clerk if there is any questions or concerns that we need to look at.
Oh, you mean, the city attorney?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, city attorney, what did I say?
Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan, was there anything on there that was bad?
It looked good to me.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, we're in.
Yeah, I looked at it last week, and it looked fine to me, and having your visions.
All right. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
Who oversees this, as far as upgrading the facades? Is it the business owner, or is it the city?
No, city.
The city.
It's the city's grant. And then, when it comes time to do the matching grant, or the, not the matching grant, but the big grant, that will be through the city as well. So the city will have the final say in the design.
Okay. And business owners can opt in or opt out?
Yes. It's not mandatory that they get in it. Let's say if you rent a Main Street business, the renter cannot be the person that does it. The owner of the property is the one that has to be involved in it.
So if there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the planning grant agreement between the State of Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the City of Beech Grove.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. I think I'm the only person that has to sign this, so I'll sign it, and then I'll call the grant writer and have him come and pick it up.
How about if I give it to you, and I let you hold it, Dan?
All right. Thank you, Board. That's the first step in what will be a very rewarding process, so. Next up, retirement with DPW. And I'll defer to the clerk to read the retirement letter into the record, please.
Dear members of the Board, I am writing this letter to inform you of my retirement from the City of Beech Grove. My last working date will be September 29, 2017. My hire date was June 2000. I am leaving my position as mechanic with Public Works Department on good terms and with plenty of advance notice. With zero vacation, zero personal, and zero compensatory time remaining, I currently have a balance of 186 sick hours accumulated, and would request to be paid for this time according to the handbook regulations. I would like to add that it has been my great pleasure to serve all the departments and above all the community. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns regarding my retirement from employment. Respectfully, Tom Wilson.
Brad?
Yeah, so, he came to me a couple of months ago, brought this up, and we had a discussion about it, and I, we gave him a couple of months to get things in line, and obviously gave him that amount of time to think about it. And I think he feels confident with the decision he's made, and we respect that. And Tom's been a great service to, not just our department, but the entire city. I think probably every department can speak to something that he's done for him. He truly has a servant's heart, and always willing to do whatever is asked of him. So he'll be greatly missed. I hate to see him go, but I understand he has other things he'd like to do in life, and he wants to free up some time to do those things. So, as he's put in the letter, September will be his last month. October, he'll be retired as of the 1st. My plan is, I've actually spoken with someone last week, and I will bring them more than likely, as long as they go through a few of the hoops they've got to go through. At the next board meeting, I'll submit that person to take Tom's place. But not easy shoes to fill, and we wish him the best, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Board, have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
I have none.
I do. I think Tom has been wonderful to work with over the past five or six years. The transformation out there at DPW that he's been involved in, he was in on the trash trucks, the skid steer, the pickup trucks, the F-450s, the hot patch machine, the updates to the salt barn, the buildings, and the tank removal, all of that, he had his hands on. And it was just a good, it was just a good deal.
Mm-hmm.
And I think he'll certainly be missed.
Definitely.
So, I want to go ahead and get this approved, and then stay right there, Brad. Any other questions from Board members?
No.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the request for retirement.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Can you elaborate just a little bit on the direction that we'd like to go with maintenance?
Yeah, there's been some discussion about, potentially down the road, bringing on additional help to help the police and fire with some oil changes and brake jobs and things like that, where we can be of service to other departments, if that would work out for them as well as us. And I think that's the direction you would like to see that go, and we're certainly open to it. So, see how we get there.
Yeah, I think if we maintain our own fleet of vehicles, that could reduce our costs, but also give us a better grip on maintaining our equipment.
I agree.
So we're looking into that, so. Anyway, anything else, Brad?
I think that's it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We have a request this evening from our friends at Napoli about pet-friendly outdoor dining, and if Dan could read that into the record, then we'll take it up.
Dear Board, I am asking approval for the sidewalk dining space in front of Napoli Valley located at 758 Main Street to be deemed pet-friendly. I am finding that some guests are requesting that they be allowed to bring their leash dogs while dining outside. Thank you for your consideration. Carmelina Pezy.
I think a lot of those are service dogs that are required to be with their owner. So she wanted to come in front of the Board with it, so it's open for discussion.
Strictly outside only?
Yes.
I have no opinion either way.
I got one question. At this point, and I think we should have done it previously, I think the city needs to be listed as additional insured, since this is on city sidewalks, and if a dog would bite somebody, or someone trip over a chair or table...
Do they have outside dining now?
Yes.
Yes. Do we request that from them now?
I don't know if we have or have it on file or not.
We have not. Same way with these tabs, I think both of these need, anybody that has outside dining on city-owned property needs to have additional insured, you know, with the city listed.
That's, yeah. I deal with additional insureds, and if it's on somebody else's property, you're better at it. You've got to have it on your own.
Right.
So...
Well, I know in the last lawsuit we got, and it wasn't even our thing, they start off with the governor and go all the way down to the mayor, so, they name everybody and anybody, so I just think it's something to protect the citizens.
It shouldn't cost them anything.
No.
It's just a form, so...
Part of their policy.
That's a good suggestion, Dan.
How about if we approve the request pending filing of insurance naming us additional insured?
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Last order of business is follow-up on the contract with the FOPLodge 86 and the Marion County Professional Firefighters Local 416. And we left it that we, correct me if I'm wrong, we approved everything except the longevity. And if you both want to come up and talk about the longevity and how you derived where
Good evening, Board of Works. Thank you for letting us come and talk to you. Again, Paul Cloyde, Beech Grove President of the Local Division 416. We've already done a lot of talking about the contract. We adjusted all the items that we talked about in the same way that we discussed adjusting them in our last meeting. The only thing left to discuss is the longevity, which you will note that we have adjusted to 3.5%, which is a very modest sense on the dollar when it comes to the salary change. What it does is, you know, it's the change we wanted to make to it. The number is actually for us, because we had two members retire, so at 3.5% rather than 4%, we'll actually be taking, we had two members with the highest longevity on the department retire, so actually, our longevity budget will now be smaller than it was. So we actually are spending less money. We're basically reinvesting those gentlemen's longevity into everyone else, and giving small raises to keep us competitive with the rest of the county, which is really the main goal of all our discussions here. I think that is all I had to add. Nathan, do you have anything else?
What we wanted, what I wanted to do was, and I talked to Scott about it, and Aaron, I didn't want a percentage, I wanted a dollar figure. And the dollar figure that they gave me was $110.
That is, Nathan, that's how it calculates out. If you'd like to hear a dollar figure, we wanted it written as a percentage, so that every percentage raise we get, our longevity then adjusts with the times. So it's not $100 to 20 years ago.
Well, we'll take it up next year at the, when we do the salary ordinance next year. But what I wanted to do, Paul, was, was I wanted it in the salary ordinance as $110, because I want to give that to every full-time employee, not just police and fire. So that's why that was important, that we have a dollar figure. And I didn't want to add odd cents up top of it. So I wanted, we plugged it in at $110 for 2018.
And that's about 3.5%? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if it was 3.5%, it was $110.39.
Okay. I understand.
So, that's where I wanted to go with it. And it's much easier to do it that way.
Well, and I see that, but I think just a few minutes extra calculation time for us, our goal is to go to a percentage over a stagnating amount that doesn't change every year. That would be the same that we had 20 years ago, if we never touch it again. And, you know, the promises of next year we'll change it, or we'll raise it up four years from, we can write in the next eight years it goes up and write it all out, but...
And sometimes, even if it was $110.39, when you get the total up, the clerk could round it up or lower it. Like if it's under 50 cents, so it...
Certainly is leeway.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't wash. I mean, that's the best way, in my opinion, to do it. You have a dollar figure right there, and that's it.
Well, I have it written out, and the copies of the contract that I would have you sign today have it written as a written percentage. So I wouldn't be prepared to change the actual wording of our contract with this. We would have to go back and make those adjustments for you. And my membership voted, we switched it to a percentage, not a static amount, with the idea that, yes, the percentage is making it slightly harder to calculate. I agree with that. And that maybe you have to round up or round down, but the idea is, every single year, this amount changes with our cost of living, because prior, it does not. If we go and say it's $110 this year, it doesn't. I'd have to talk, go back and discuss with my members again, and make sure that, what do you think?
Let me ask, so what you're saying is, so this year, it would just be set at $110.
$110.
And then next year, when it gets recalculated 3.5%, it could be set at, you're just trying to round it either up or down? Okay. I understand what you're saying.
My opinion on that, it's never a percentage, because your civilian employees that are full-time, their 3.5% wouldn't equal what the police and fires 3.5% is. We want to give the same raise across the board to every full-time employee. So the $10 is greater, especially for civilian employees versus police and fires.
So you're looking every year based on what our calculation is, so that way you can set a dollar figure for everybody else, too?
I'm... I think, I think we can still come to an agreement on that. I don't want a flat number every year, as long as it's going to be something that we can...
Based off the calculation. If it's within a few cents, I think we can, yeah.
Okay. And then, I do have one other question on there, because I was told that this would come out of the police and fires budget, instead of the city's budget. So I need your department heads, let's say if you've got 30 employees, and, you know, they're all going to have different amount of years, I need to know exactly what that dollar amount is, and what budget they want it taken out of.
That's, you're going to have to discuss that with the mayor. This has been negotiated in good faith with the city, to be voted on by the Board of
I think with both chiefs, I think we've talked about in leading up to this, that any new monies that are not available, if we want to do this, and I have no issue with doing this at all, it's going to have to come out of the operating budget of the city, of the department. That only makes sense.
And that's what I was told all along, so...
As I said, on the fire side, there's no impact to the city.
Yeah. Well, there would be when them individuals are replaced.
At a certain point, but you're talking the amount of longevity that left, it would be something over the next few years that we can budget for. There's no, actually, it's $1,500 that is going to be extra left over after this.
Well, what I need is $10 per person, per year, for everyone in your department.
Okay. Well, we've negotiated a contract with the city, in good faith, and I would assume that any negotiations that were made, anything that was agreed on up to this point, is fundable. And I think we're here to vote on it with the Board of Works. So I don't know where that money's coming from, or how that factors into the budgetary process.
We don't have money to fund it.
Okay. Okay. So if you're telling me that, are you telling me that... So if you're telling me that, are you telling me that after we've negotiated a contract in good faith with the city to be voted on by the Board of Works, that after the fact you're going to try to undermine that contract?
I'm not undermining anything.
Because here's the thing, we have negotiated in good faith.
I'm all for it. All I want is your department head.
We have negotiated in good faith with the city, and I hope you're not telling me that what we've negotiated, you're not going to fund. Because we've negotiated it, it's been agreed upon, and now it's to be voted on.
I was told that it would come out of the.
Please tell me you're not going to come on the record and tell us.
I'm on the record.
So you're going on the record to say you're not going to pay this contract?
On the record, yes I am. Pardon me? We have not, we have not signed off on the contract.
You don't sign off on the contract.
For longevity. The Board of Works has not done it. The council has not approved the salary ordinance and it's got to go into the salary ordinance.
We are negotiating in good faith with the city to be voted on by the Board of Works. So I don't know where we're at here. I'd love to discuss anything with the Board of Works, with the mayor, but that is the point where we're at. We have negotiated a contract in good faith to be voted on now.
But it has not been approved, the longevity by the Board of Works.
We're here to approve or disapprove the contract.
I'll open it up to the floor for comment or questions.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying. And Dan, you're saying where is it coming out of, out of operating budget? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was told by the mayor who negotiated with FOP and IFD.
Beach Grove Local 416.
Sorry.
Dave, any comments?
Yeah, what was your understanding on this? Oh, I am all for this, and I think that you sit down and see what new monies are available. If there's not new monies available, as I said, or as long as I could, if we talked about this, if there's new monies available, it's paid for with new money. If there's not new monies available, if you want to do this, you have to take it out of your current budget. That's, and that hasn't changed.
Right.
And you're saying the operating budget?
Yeah, the budget of the fire department and the budget of the police. Budget of DPW, budget of.
So if the money is not in the operating budget, where would it come from?
Oh, I think it would be in the, I think it would come from either new money or in the budget, one of the two.
Can I just say that if we agree contractually here today and say that we're going to pay a 3.5 longevity and it does not exist in my budget, does not exist in the FOP's budget, and clearly the clerk treasurer believes it does not exist in the city's budget, then it comes from, I don't know. That would then void our working contract. So I think, I was under the standing, and I apologize to the council here, I, you know, came back on vacation, there's meetings that went on, but it was my understanding that we had sat down and discussed this and that the numbers had been brought up, that this was a minimum feasible over the next three years with no additional. So this here is surprising to me.
It would have a bearing on the police department, wouldn't have a bearing on your budget.
Right, and it matters to me just as much that it has, obviously I want them too.
Yeah, but because your budget is, your current budget funds the longevity, and it will fund it next year.
Okay, so I just, to be clear, it wasn't worked out that if, you know, our budgets didn't have the extra $10 a person, that it would come from the city?
Now, if you didn't lose two members, Paul, then you would be in the same situation.
Absolutely, and in my mind, we are in the same situation. It's one bucket. And if you want to do it for the rest of the employees, can I ask, where would the rest of the employees get it from?
If it's not new money, or it would come out of their operating budget.
My budget, I'm taking it right out of my clerk's professional services to give the two full-time women in my office the increase in longevity.
Well, then maybe it's a moment for if the administration has done some mapping of that. I know, obviously I know where we stand, I don't know where the police stand, if it would be additional money from the city or not. And I guess that's where we're at, if we need to figure that out.
So what, I don't know, what are we saying here? I mean, we've negotiated a contract. Do you believe that these contracts are fundable?
Oh, I do.
Okay. Then I, I will leave it at that for us to.
Chief, you have a dollar figure? Mark, you have dollars right off the top of your head?
Yes, for longevity for 2017, our longevity budget was $45,300. For 2018, if you would take our current longevity and if you added $100 to everyone, it adds additional $3,700, which bring that figure up to $49,000. With the 110 per employee, it comes to $47,467.40. So if you take a look at the decrease, because we had members leave, it actually saves, or actually kind of in the bank, 1532 as a decrease. If you would compare the same figures with the same people of our previous longevity, so I think the fire department would be fine with the new longevity rate.
Brad, we talked about this the other day, how this would affect your budget. Do you remember your figures?
$1,480.
That's it? Could that be absorbed in your budget?
How many total members do you have? 33, we're talking $330. So if we budgeted for an additional $100, the old rate, the current rate, additional $100 per member, right, every year? The fire department, excuse me, police department is about 33 members, $330 additional.
No, it's per year.
I agree with you, but I'm saying the difference between this year and next year is, the difference between this year and next year is $100 a person per year, absolutely. So it would be $10 per year, per person.
For 2018 to 2019, not 17 to 18.
I believe it.
Well, Mayor, if you believe that this contract for both us and fire is fundable in its entirety, then I believe we're ready for a vote. I mean, unless there's other questions.
We don't have.
I don't have any other issues if you believe it's fundable.
No, what I'm saying is, if there's new monies available and we can't do it, then I have to sit down with the chief, it has to come out of the budget, the existing budget. That's been.
I understand.
Chief, or either chief, has that changed any at all, what I've said?
Because I assume the 2% raise has already been factored in on everybody's budgets. We're just talking about the difference in longevity now. So we're talking in each department, a minuscule amount this year. Okay. If, I believe, we've discussed this contract a lot in the last two months. We've discussed it with the Board of Works. I believe that it has been negotiated in good faith, and that if you tell me it's fundable, then I think we're ready to put pen to paper.
Any other questions, comments?
I have none.
My only other comment is the three and a half percent needs to say $10, so it's uniform citywide.
I think in the salary ordinance, Dan, we put in there 110 for this, or, yeah, the one that we're working on now.
But it's a three-year contract.
No, two.
Okay, two-year contract. It still needs to state that it's a $10 increase.
Well, it's a calculation, so each year that number's going to change. So it can't be codified in the contract because we don't know, I mean, we know maybe there's a 2% raise next year, there might be a, we might find oil and we can do a 10% raise, I don't know. So it's, we don't know what the percentage will be next year until we know what the budget is.
So next year when you recalculate the longevity, it would be a different number.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Okay, so I take it that it can be funded, so we can move forward on that, right? Are we changing the verbiage from the 3.5% to $110 figure?
We're good with the three and a half percent, and we understand that that number is going to be, once it gets calculated into the actual salary ordinance, it's going to become a number different than the three and a half percent, you know?
It'd have to be rounded up, rounded down. We're not asking for a quarter of a penny.
You know, I don't think that's worth.
Which we currently do on our stipends as it is.
Yeah, I mean.
Am I right, Dan? Certain things are rounded up or rounded down.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it's going to be a different calculation every year, so I think we can.
I would like to not change the verbiage. I'd like it to be there because that protects my members and says that this number will change with how your pay changes. It will always be $110 if we choose to not change it next year or the year after.
But the problem being again is the three and a half percent next year is on the $110, it's not on the 100. That's the reason why it should have a dollar amount in there.
But it's still, it's only calculated off of the base salary. It's not actually calculated off of what you make on top of your longevity. So it'll never change unless you change the base salary.
All right, any other questions? Motion to approve or deny the longevity clause in the agreement.
I'll make said motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well and the motion carries.
Just like, besides saying thank you, also Scott sends his regards, or Captain Fergal sends his regards, he had a family emergency come up this afternoon, so he couldn't make it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
I got one other question. We've got them listed on here separately. Is one vote good for both?
One vote on each, right?
We can.
I think that'd be the proper thing to do.
Um, let's do the, since the 416 listed first, do a motion to approve the longevity language in the agreement for the local 416.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Motion to approve the longevity language in the FOP Lodge 86 contract.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business, comments from board members.
I have none.
I have none, thank you.
No comments, motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:44 PM. The Board of Public Works and Safety will reconvene on Monday, September the 18th at 2017 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time we will call to order our common council meeting for Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. In lieu of a call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Jim Brooks, Councilman Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lampin, Councilwoman District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you. The President Pro Tem, Bud Templeton, had an issue at work and he couldn't be here this evening. Councilor Vito Mascherian, District 2, has a sick child. He called this afternoon, he could not be here either as well. So at this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't see the owners of the Safeway, they were supposed to be here tonight to do a introduction about the store and how well, or how they're doing. But I do, in your packet, council, I did have a disclosure in there that I wanted to make you aware of. I read this same disclosure two weeks ago at the Board of Works meeting, and I just feel like it's important that we let folks know what's going on. I wanted to disclose to the general public some general information concerning the Safeway Grocery Store, which recently opened. At the grand opening, August the 18th, Safeway owner Scott Weaver, during the ceremony, handed me a bag which had 150 $50 gift cards inside. He wanted the gift cards to be distributed to the city employees and everyone associated with the City of Beach Grove for their support received during this transition. I handed the bag to the clerk treasurer and the clerk distributed them per Mr. Weaver's request. Leftover gift cards will be or have been given to servants' heart to assist with their outreach program. No elected or appointed official approached Mr. Weaver and asked for this to occur, nor was anything agreed to pursuant to any services rendered. I also want to disclose that when the Marsh Store first closed and the building was vacant, I had Department of Public Works remove a very filthy graffiti marking from the west outside wall of the building. This reflected very poorly on the city and it needed to be removed. I also want to disclose that on more than one occasion, I have asked Public Works crews to go to the back lots of the vacant Dairy Queen building and along the tree line behind the kinder care to collect brush and heavy trash, including furniture, that had been dumped by people not associated with any of the buildings. I also want to disclose that I had asked DPW crews to paint the bottoms of the signs and posts located in the parking lot of the vacant Marsh Store and along the curb line at the street. I also had DPW to install a stop sign where the parking lot meets 18th Street for the safety of the general public. This all was done while the building was empty. I also want to disclose to the Safeway, that the Safeway store manager Carl Blaze asked our DPW director during a meeting if a crew could patch some potholes in the lot prior to the store opening. The DPW director would not do this unless I authorized the work. I authorized the work, which took minimal time and material, and I did not ask for anything in return. I wanted to disclose all of this for transparency and openness. Any questions or comments? Okay, I don't see them. Okay. We'll move on. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is a proclamation declaring September the 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Beach Grove. And Griselda Braz is here tonight from the Indiana Latino Institute, and I'll ask her to come up and I'll read the proclamation into the record. Did I butcher that name?
No, you were pretty close. I butchered, but it's Griselda Braz. Hello, everybody.
Easier to say than Marlene Dotson. Where's Marlene when you need her?
Proclamation naming September 15th, October 15th Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Beach Grove. Whereas since 1968, the United States has observed Hispanic Heritage Month from September the 15th to October the 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contribution of those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is significant as it marks the anniversary of independence for seven countries including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. Whereas the Latino population across the country represents 17% of the total United States population and 6.4% of Indiana's population. Latinos represent 9.6% of the population in Marion County. Whereas the Hispanic citizens in our city serve in the military, start businesses, are students and teachers in our schools, attend our churches, and contribute to our community. They share the same dreams, values, challenges, and triumphs. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim September the 15th, 2017 to October the 15th, 2017, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana to be affixed this fifth day of September, 2017. And Griselda, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the City of Beach Grove.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Welcome, I mean, yeah, welcome, welcome me, welcome everybody. All right, so I wasn't supposed to be here tonight, but we had some mishaps, and Marlene Dotson sends her regards, and she apologizes for not ever, not being able to be here tonight. We are preparing for our annual luncheon, so it's very chaotic, and as you guys can all guess, with the recent announcement that was made today, our DACA students are going through a lot right now, so we are hosting something similar to this for the families and the students in order to kind of keep chaos under control and be able to continue to advocate. to advocate for them. But speaking in light of Hispanic Heritage Month, I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here, to the Mayor of Beech Grove for the opportunity to have this proclamation. Hispanic Heritage Month is not just about bringing to light the Latinos that are currently here in the United States and in Beech Grove, but also all the Latinos who have paved the way, not only for Latinos, but to Americans in general, who have fought in the wars, who have represented us, who have allowed us to make movements and allowed us to progress, whether it be in business, education, advocacy efforts, politics, and for that, we try to celebrate throughout the month of September onto October, all the contributions that come from all the way to Spain, Mexico, Costa Rica, you name it, we're all here. Uh, I know that everybody's a big fan of Latino food, particularly tacos, Mexican tacos, you know, uh, so that is a popular cultural contribution that comes to the United States, but more than that, uh, it's about people being people and humans being humans and having the opportunity to cross through borders, to be able to follow dreams, to be able to advocate for families, but also build onto cities such as great as Beech Grove. So, uh, I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Being Latina myself, this is a great opportunity to be here. Uh, you guys have about 700 people, I have learned, in Beech Grove who identify as either Hispanic or Latino, uh, and that's on the rise. I, where I parked as I was pulling up was in front of a house of all Latino kids, you know, and they were outside playing, so these, these kids are the future of Beech Grove. They're gonna contribute to the businesses, they're the ones that are gonna be your main street shoppers, they're the ones that are going to continue to teach and educate and maybe even hold some of these positions that are before you tonight. So I thank you, um, I encourage you to continue to celebrate diversity in Beech Grove, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
You know, the Latino, uh, Indiana Latino Institute has been in existence for about six years, and they started right when I became mayor, so I got lucky because, uh, I started going to their functions immediately, and I've met some wonderful people, uh, and, but kind of, uh, a funny thing has evolved around all of this. Whenever they have, uh, breakfasts or, or lunches, uh, or events, they have a, uh, MC. And generally, except for the last breakfast they had, the MC is always Rafael Sanchez from Channel 6. So, the President of Power and Light, who is, Power and Light is very active in the Indiana Latino Institute, and the President, and I think the Director of the ILI?
Yes.
Is a gentleman by name of Rafael Sanchez. So, whenever they call for the Rafael Sanchez to come to the stage, both of them show up. Well, the other day, we were at the Latino breakfast, Mayor's Breakfast, and, uh, the MC was Jim Schella, and it wasn't Rafael Sanchez. So, when, uh, the President, uh, of IPO got up Rafael Sanchez, he said, "I don't know how to act because Rafael Sanchez is not here." So it's just a side joke, and, and, uh, they're very warm people, and, uh, it's, it's been my pleasure to, to be with them, so, I appreciate you coming, coming tonight. And please, uh, tell Marco Domingos I said hi, and, uh, he's a wonderful man.
Absolutely.
Yes. All right. Thanks. Yes.
Can I just say, thank you for representing what's best about us as Ameri, about us as our Americans. Thank you for representing the good of us. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. On a day like today. Thank you. Very much. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Council, I wanted to do a proclamation, uh, concerning Drug Overdose and Awareness Month, and, um, for September this year, and I wanted to read this, uh, to you before I introduced our guest. Uh, proclamation naming the month of September as Overdose Awareness Month in the City of Beech Grove. Whereas the Beech Grove Police Department finds drugs and needles on individuals on a daily basis, and whereas the Beech Grove Fire Department responds daily to overdoses throughout the city and surrounding areas, and whereas the burden placed on our public safety officials in dealing with opiate overdoses is extreme, and the cost to respond and treat the citizens who overdose place a financial burden on the taxpayers, and whereas the City of Beech Grove is looking for ways to assist families of those who overdose, whether by the voucher system or by public education in an attempt to reduce the number of these occurrences. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as Overdose Awareness Month in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, to be affixed this fifth day of September, 2017. And before I introduce our guest, there's a couple folks, uh, that are here tonight that I wanted to recognize. One of them is Terry Shore. Terry, uh, got me involved with, uh, opiate overdoses, uh, early on when I became mayor. I knew absolutely nothing about it, um, but through her guidance, and she has done some wonderful work, uh, to try to combat, uh, to combat, uh, this awful, awful problem. Uh, our friend Diane Hendricks is in the back tonight. Uh, she has worked, uh, extremely hard on developing programs and funding opportunities to fight addiction and to help families who have, uh, opiate problems. So, to both of you, I say thank you. Uh, this evening, we have Kevin Moore. Kevin is the Director of Mental Health and Addiction with the State of Indiana, the, uh, FSSA, Family and Social Services Administration. And we have Peggy Welch, uh, with the FSSA, who is the Advocacy Officer. So I would like to present this proclamation to them, and then I'll turn the microphone over to them. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very important. Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, good evening. Um, my name's Kevin Moore, the Director of the Division of Mental Health and Addiction for the Family and Social Services Administration, which is a large state agency that administers Medicaid, um, cash assistance programs, uh, the Division of Aging, Family Resources, um, things like that, and we're one of those six divisions. Um, also with me tonight is Peggy Welch, who's our Chief Advocacy Officer, and her role is to focus on outreach to local governments, elected officials, um, to talk about and engage what FSSA does, what the divisions do, and how we can be of help and support to local governments throughout, uh, the State of Indiana. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and Council members for allowing me to have a few minutes with you tonight, and the opportunity to speak about addiction in Indiana, specifically about the opiate crisis. It's, uh, particularly important, and I think, uh, congruent for me to be here with the Proclamation of Overdose Awareness Month, but also let you know September is National Recovery Month, and we are celebrating recovery from addiction throughout the nation and throughout Indiana through the month of September. What I want to do is give you some information about substance use disorders in general, some information about opioids specifically, uh, some things going on at the state level that will impact work at the local level, and then talk about some local actions that can be taken to ensure that people have access and opportunities to recover from their addiction. Um, our goal and our mission at the Division of Mental Health and Addiction is to promote mental health, to prevent substance misuse, and to facilitate access to treatment and recovery across the state. We do that by setting standards for addiction providers. If anyone wants to do addiction work in Indiana, my division has to come out and certify those providers, small and large providers. Um, we, we operate and oversee the state psychiatric hospitals, uh, we work on growing our provider network across the state, um, both on the mental health and on the addiction side, and we have a, a big stake in prevention efforts that are going on across the state as well. So let's focus a little bit for, for a couple minutes on just substance use disorders in general. Um, substance use disorders occur with, with the recurrent use of alcohol or drugs, and causes clinically significant impairment, including health problems, disability, failure to meet responsibilities at work, school, or at home. This is often characterized by the continued use of alcohol or drugs despite negative consequences. This is a real confounding problem for a variety of reasons. First of all, different people define this differently. Uh, there's a legal definition that these folks who are addicted and using drugs are violating the law and need to be dealt with accordingly. There's a significant part of our citizens in Indiana and across the country that see addiction is a moral failure. If they had made better decisions along the way, if they'll just stop what they're doing and change their ways, they'll get better. Then there's the, uh, the, the view that addiction is a brain disease, that it changes the chemical balance in the brain, it changes the, uh, the circuitry, the pathways in the brain, and, uh, and you can't really address addiction unless you change some of the things that are going on in the brain. The sources of drugs are diverse. You have legally prescribed drugs that are abused, you have legally prescribed drugs that are sold on the street, that are found in grandma's cabinet and used, uh, and you also have, on the other hand, illegal drugs, marijuana, cocaine, heroin, meth, that are all available, um, across our state. The problem is shifts from time to time. In the 60s and 70s, we were talking about pot and heroin. In the 80s, cocaine was the drug of choice, and the 90s brought methamphetamine and meth labs across many states, and today, we're back to heroin. Um, and that, back to heroin has really been driven by the prescription drug epidemic, the availability of prescription drugs. Um, uh, close to 90% of people who abuse and are addicted to heroin started with prescription drugs. Uh, so that's a significant precursor to the use of heroin. And this other, uh, the last reason this is such a difficult issue is that there's never just gonna be one answer. It takes prevention efforts, enforcement efforts, and treatment efforts, all working together and in parallel to try to get a handle on what's going on. So let's talk about addiction in, in Indiana a little bit, and I'll hit on some highlights of, of different, uh, drugs that people use. Alcohol is the most frequently abused substance in Indiana. Um, uh, more than a third of admissions to treatment in Indiana last year were because of alcohol abuse. Among college students, nearly 63% report past month use of alcohol, most of those are underage, um, and in high school age kids, um, nearly 11% report past month use of alcohol. Shifting to marijuana, which is the most commonly used illegal substance in Indiana, 20% of college kids report past month use of marijuana, and 16% of high school kids report past month use of marijuana. So, 10% or 11% of high school kids past month use of, of alcohol, 16% of marijuana. So, alcohol used to be the biggest target for high school kids, now it's marijuana, um, along with, with alcohol. Heroin is a much smaller, uh, percentage of our population. Um, among high school kids, less than half of 1% of college kids had used heroin in the past month, and among Hoosier, among all Hoosiers, it's about .3% use heroin in the past month. So why is it capturing the headlines? Well, it's a lot more deadly and a lot more addictive quicker than heroin or than marijuana or alcohol. Thus, the focus on heroin at this point in time is absolutely on target because of its significant growth over the past five to eight years, along with the growth of prescription drugs. The use of those opiates and the addiction to those opiates have created multifaceted problems for communities. Your law enforcement that are here will testify to that, your first responders, your hospitals, teachers, parents, clergy, everyone can testify that that has grown significantly over the past, um, eight to 10 years. In 2016, there were 11 million prescription drugs dispensed in Indiana. Over half of those were for opioids. So 5 million plus prescriptions for opioids in Indiana in 2016. In, uh, in admissions to addiction treatment, we talked about 35% people reporting alcohol abuse, uh, prescription drugs were, were at 28% of the admissions to, uh, to treatment. Opioid use, um, has an adverse impact on communities and citizens. Um, when you look at it biologically, opioids block the brain's perception of pain by binding to opiate receptors in the brain, and this interferes with signals transmitted by the nervous system to the brain. Opiates are depressants, which mean they have a depressant effect on the central nervous system and the respiratory system, um, and as a result, um, opioids, uh, create feelings of euphoria, and this euphoric feeling is often associated with a high, um, that, that people get when abusing painkillers or opiates. When someone becomes addicted to opiates, the addiction is, uh, really, what's, what drives the addiction is always reliving that first experience, that first high, or to avoid withdrawal sickness, uh, if they were not to, to use again. Um, that's, that drives the ongoing addiction. And what might have been at first, um, a voluntary or recreational or a coping mechanism use of opiate quickly becomes an addiction because of the nature of, of, of that drug. So what do we know? We know that treatment works. Um, if you can get someone detoxed from opiates, um, that's an important first step. Getting them into an environment where they can't get opiates is equally important, so residential treatment programs are important as well. Um, we know that the most evidence-based practice around opiate treatment is medication-assisted treatment. That means people taking methadone, taking buprenorphine, or naltrexone, in addition with counseling and supportive work, um, have a greater chance of recovery than those who don't, uh, take those medications at all. So we know that that's an, uh, an important evidence-based treatment program. We know that people living in environments, once they complete residential treatment is important, so, so sober living houses or halfway homes that are abstinence-based are important. We know that recovery supports, those things that help us engage in, in community on a, on a daily life, on a daily basis, housing and work and social connection are also important to recovery. But the, the, the use of medication-assisted treatment cannot be understated at all. In Indiana, we have currently a 13 opiate treatment programs where people can go and get methadone and, uh, and counseling for, for their opiate addiction. That will soon grow to, uh, to 18, uh, by June 30th of next year. Um, but there's lots of places, any physician who's gone through training can provide suboxone or buprenorphine for folks as they over, work to overcome opiate addiction, um, and there's a number of those across the state as well. So what's happening at the state level? Uh, first and foremost, Governor Holcomb created the Drug Commission, um, led by Jim McClelland, whose, whose responsibility is to organize and, and, and guide the work of a dozen or so state agencies who are trying to address, um, the opiate crisis that we're currently facing. Um, they really focused on prevention, and I've received an update from the state police today, they had a number of arrests in southern Indiana lately, people dealing opiates and prescription drugs illegally. Um, a focus on treatment and recovery, and a huge focus on, um, evidence-based practices around prevention. Um, some things that we are doing within the Division involve some legislation that passed this past year. There were a number of initiatives around opiate, uh, treatment and access to care, from involuntary commitment laws for people, for, uh, addiction treatment, to mobile addiction teams, programs that help neonatal abstinence syndrome babies, um, who are born with that syndrome and their moms recover from addiction. So a number of legislative initiatives that, uh, that are currently underway and being implemented across the state. We, uh, implement a program and run a program called Recovery Works. We get mu, we get, uh, $20 million in, in, from the state legislature to connect felons to mental health and addiction treatment. These are felons on community corrections, felons coming from jail, felons coming from the DOC, but target specifically that population of felons and connecting them to treatment, all in an effort to reduce recidivism and victimization in the future. Uh, most recently, uh, we were awarded almost $11 million in federal funds from the 21st Century Cures Act. Um, this came from a, a federal legislation that put out nearly $500 million across the country. Indiana's share was $10.9 million, and out of those dollars, we are expanding residential capacity. We are providing training to, um, physicians and nurses and clinicians across the, the state on how to recognize opiate use disorders and how to, how, how to best treat them. We are implementing mobile addiction teams in rural parts of our state, um, who, who have, don't have access to care. Uh, we are, are, are placing peers in emergency rooms. These are trained people in recovery in emergency rooms, so when your EMS takes someone to the hospital that they've used naloxone on, they can immediately get connected, um, to a, a peer. naloxone on, they can immediately get connected to a peer who's in recovery, and then that peer will help them access and gain treatment for their addiction and then recovery down the road. We have purchased a half a million dollars' worth of naloxone, most of that for the State Department of Health to share locally through local public health departments. We've purchased some for the state police, as well as for the Department of Natural Resources. So lots of things going on around opiates at this time. So let me leave you with what can communities do. First of all, know what your prevention efforts are. What's going on in your schools? What's going on with your chamber? What's going on with your churches around prevention of drug use and addiction? It needs to happen early, and it needs to happen often. We all have had teenagers or been around teenagers. It's hard to tell them things. But if they hear that message early and often, it will stick with them. But we also need prevention efforts around, so people know how to safely dispose of their opiate medications that they have left over, or at least store them safely, how to account for them, how to recognize signs and symptoms of addiction with people in their family. Secondly, communities can become recovery-oriented. And what that means is know what your community needs are, know what your treatment continuum is, what's available in a 10-mile radius of where we stand right now, what's available in Marion County, what's available in the Donut Counties in terms of treatment that people can get referred to and provided information about. Part of being a recovery community is knowing the impact that stigma has on people who are having a substance use disorder. It prevents many people from seeking treatment, from going public with their disease or their illness. So our use of language, our provision of opportunities for people to be successful in recovery is important as you become a recovery community. Know what harm reduction efforts are and how important they can be. There's a lot of debate and discussion in Indiana around syringe exchange programs. And while they are not addiction treatment, they are a public health tool to prevent the spread of disease from across the rest of the state and the nation. And the last part is just know what your data says. What do your arrest information say about people who have been revived with naloxone? Where are they seeing hotspots in your areas? Where does EMS go? So what's your data telling you where you can target specific efforts around addiction? There's a lot going on across the state. The former state health commissioner, who is now the U.S. Surgeon General, said last week, he doesn't believe we've seen the worst of this yet because numbers are still trending up. Just a report yesterday in the New York Times that more people are dying from fentanyl, that opioid medication, as opposed to heroin. And that's scary because just a little bit of fentanyl can really create some harm to folks and to families. So I applaud your focus on overdose awareness, your focus on recovery, and if there are things that the division can do to help provide you resources or information, we stand ready to do that. Just let us know. The mayor knows how to get ahold of us, or through Peggy, we're happy to do that. So with that, I'll end my presentation, and if there are any questions from anyone, I'm happy to try to address those. Yes, sir?
So yesterday, I read Governor Christie's report.
Yes.
Last month on drug addiction and overdoses. He makes the following points. I was trying to write them down as you were talking. In the United States, 60,000 people a year die of a drug overdose, whether it be prescription drugs or illegal drugs. That's 164 people a day. 58,000 people were killed in Vietnam. 58,000 Americans were killed in Vietnam. Essentially, what we're dealing with is a 9/11-style event every three weeks in this country, just based on these deaths. And he makes the point that if 164 people were killed a day by ISIS, what would we do? We would be under martial law right now, trying to figure this issue out. So it's definitely an epidemic.
It is. And I think a lot of the reason why we're not seeing a greater response is stigma. It's that even within the treatment community, there's debate on, is it a disease? Is this a moral failure? What's the best way to do it? So we're not unified at all in what our approach. And what Governor Christie's commission can help do, I think, and will help do, is unify a lot of those efforts from the federal agencies, which trickles down to state and local efforts.
I just want to make you aware of Mayor Buckley with Diana Hendricks and Terry. You know, we have our Drug-Free Community Coalition.
Terrific.
So I just want to call the attention to all the hard work from some very dedicated people because we're at the foundation of really working hard for our community.
And that's where most of the change will take place. It's those local efforts that drive work in the schools, work with other events, public education, reducing stigma, absolutely. So thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I don't know if you would know the answer. Here's a petition called from the medical profession to the FDA.
I've heard of a number of initiatives, and I do know that there has been a push to remove those. In Indiana, the legislature took the bold stance that said, if this is your first, after an orthopedic event or dental event, you're only going to get X amount of pills. You're not going to get 90 pills with a 90-day refill. You're going to get.
Seven days.
Seven days at max. And then if you need more, you have to go back in for an appointment. And if I don't think I need seven, I now have the option to tell my pharmacist, only fill two days' worth. Before, the pharmacist had to follow the prescription. So Indiana's taken some steps to try to minimize the number of prescription drugs on the street over the past couple of years, and that has gone down. And I think efforts like that will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the proclamation.
Mayor, I got a copy, Mayor picture of you.
Sure.
Can I just see? Send them to me.
Started something, Peggy.
I did. Can you hold the proclamation up? I'm going to tweet this, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, counsel. It's something that we deal with every day. You know, we can talk about good things that are going on and nice things that we do, but we also have to talk about and focus on people who are hungry, people who live in poverty, and people who are addicted to drugs. And you get a better appreciation of it when you live it. And I want to very briefly have our police and fire chief talk about the daily grind that these men and women have fighting this disease, which is, or this addiction, which is costing us more and more money to treat. So, Chief, Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be very brief, but I know I've spoke to the council before about the impact of the overdose issues in the community. And when you come here tonight, it's nice to look out in the crowd and know that you have a community that cares. You have leaders and informal leaders within this community who cares about what the police and fire are doing and how it impacts us on a daily basis. When you look at the city of Beech Grove and the services we provide in public safety, you have to stop and wonder, we're a smaller department. We run two ambulances, two engines, and our run load keeps increasing. Part of that is the opioid epidemic that we are faced with in our community. Last month, in August, our ambulances made 515 medical runs. That is a lot of EMS runs within the city and the surrounding areas. When you take a listen to your paramedics and firefighters and what they're faced with, dealing with the community and the crisis about, it impacts them emotionally and professionally. Our paramedics came back three weeks ago, and they had a double overdose. And when they started talking about it, one of them made the comment, well, that was the oldest lady I've been on, and it was a granddaughter and grandmother overdosed, and the grandmother was 73 years old with her granddaughter. And that does leave an impact on your public safety personnel. It leaves an impact when they're going out to residents at 3:00 in the morning, and you have the mother and father overdosed, unconscious, and there's a two- and five-year-old running around the house by themselves. It impacts your public safety personnel. We could sit here and we'd talk about the resources utilized, the equipment, the supplies. It has a serious impact on our budgets and how we perform, trying to provide the best services for our community. So again, just real briefly, I want to thank you guys for listening this evening. I want to thank the community and those leaders within our community trying to make an impact against the opioid epidemic. So, thank you.
Not being prepared, but I'll talk anyway. I want to thank everybody for their support, the council members. As Rob said, it takes more money to do this. We were trained, Terry trained us with the naloxone. I have taken a different stand on this. We don't have that many of those syringes anymore. The officers take them in on a call. My direction is you are first. The first responder must save themselves. If you've seen in the news, there's been a lot of first responders. A lot of policemen have actually died and brought back. They've found powder, they've brushed it off their uniforms. They've got to be doubly careful now, that if they don't know what it is, don't go. There's other things, you know, you don't know, don't go. This drug stuff for our officers, it's bad if that person is overdosed, but before they can get to them, they've got to look at the scene, even to make the scene safe, no longer from guns and knives, but from drugs. So it's something that the citizens have to understand, that if the police, and I would imagine the EMS too, is the scene has to be safe. They're going to go slower and they're going to ask questions. Where is it? What did they use? So if you get information that the police don't respond quick enough, that's the reason, is because they've got to watch where they step, what they touch, and then they can treat the patient. Thank you for listening, and hopefully this epidemic finds a resolve soon.
Chief, do you want to talk about the drug?
Oh, I don't know if it's good or bad, but our drug box, prescription drug box. I was off last week on vacation. Today, I collected everything. I had 26 pounds of prescription medication that was collected, and that is from, say, a week and a half. So a good thing, they're using it. So it at least helps some.
Thanks, Chief.
That concludes the special presentations. Next up, reading of the minutes. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I haven't had time to read them, so, because we just got them before the meeting. Can we?
I read them. They're all on the phone. They're on the website. But if you want to.
I would prefer having an opportunity to read them carefully myself, so.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I don't know. I read them on the website myself. But that's up to everybody else,
Jim, Chris, and Kevin?
I'm okay with approving.
I've read them, and I think everything looked good to me.
Ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Counselor, public comments.
Nobody signed up, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Our high school principal, Liz, is here for the youth council report. Liz?
Welcome back.
Yes, we're actually five weeks in. Good evening. I want to, obviously, with some of the federal news, state news, our own battles here in our community, I think it's important to celebrate the small things while we are continuing the work in fighting those battles. So I'll pass on this compliment. Bishop actually sought me out because he enjoys spending his Monday evenings, once a month, with you all. So I just wanted to pass that along. He will share some of the things from his perspective, and then I have a few big school things to share. So Bishop?
All right. Five weeks. I didn't realize it's been that long. So far, everything's gone pretty well. The start of the school, we've rolled out new computers to sophomores, and so far, everything's going good. This week is the homecoming game. So of course, we're going to have the parade later this week, which I actually have to go build a float after this. We also have a play later this month, which she can talk about because she has the actual dates, and I don't know them off the top of my head. So far, our football team has been going great. Your book now has a monthly newsletter that they are sending out, along with the Smore, which is the overall school district. What else was there? Chromebooks. We are now, the high school itself, our tech squad, which is a class inside, is now doing Chromebook repairs for the entire district instead of sending them out to Michigan, how we did last year. So now, our class is actually serving as a more hands-on learning instead of last year where it was all just kind of theoretical. So now, we're actually learning, and the company we partnered with at the end of the school year, some of our seniors that are going to be graduating, they're going to be offering internships to us. So it's now like an actual future job for us. So, yeah.
So a few big things, and I'll thank Councilwoman Lamping and Mayor Buckley as well. The first thing we'll start with is our learning gardens, which I think we shared a little bit about last year. They have come to fruition. Four of our schools have fully functional, planted learning gardens at this point. And so thanks to them, who were very helpful at the beginning of the year. Two programs, really in line with what Bishop mentioned. We are now a new host site to JAG, which is Jobs for America's Graduates. We're one of 13 high schools in sort of greater Indianapolis, Marion County, that hosts this program federally funded. We have the JAG specialist, who's able to bring, quite honestly, a number of programs and resources and opportunities for students that we are sometimes limited to provide. So it's going very well. We've got about 34 kids in that program now. The other thing that we have is our BG Impact, Big Impact, which is the Work Ethic Certificate Grant, and we're offering that for the first time to students this year. And with grades, attendance, behavior, and then a strong mentoring component, where they are partnered with a community business owner to go through resume building and job skill conversations through a mentoring program. We will have students graduate with the Work Ethic Certificate Grant at the end of this year. So we're very excited about that. It seems minimal, I think, in terms of the bigger community things that we are battling, but education has its own battles at this point, quite a bit in the legislature with enacting ESSA and what that might look like for high schools. So we are on the forefront of that, speaking at those various levels. So we will do what we can and continue to do what we do for our students. Any questions for either of us? Yes?
He mentioned something about a play.
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. We will have Boeing Boeing this year. I was unfamiliar with it, but I've heard it's actually quite funny. And that will be over two weekends. So, the first group of shows will be Friday, September 22nd, and Saturday, September 23rd, both at 7:00 PM. And then, we'll host two more shows on the 29th and 30th, both at 7:00 PM. Had any of you heard of Boeing Boeing? I'd not either. It looks quite funny. We're excited. Any other questions?
Community service.
Yes.
So, are there, do you have constant need for community service projects? Because I have one for you.
Oh, yes. We will definitely take it. So, we have community service, our two days, that help students fulfill the graduation requirement, but we also have our community service class...
Okay.
... that take ongoing projects throughout the year.
And would they do that, like, on a weekend or something?
Absolutely. Yep. We definitely have students who would be interested in it as part of the class.
Really?
And then, as part of our restorative practices and engaging students.
Okay. Well, they could learn a lot from these projects.
Yep.
The person that needs help, very inspirational, but how, who do I contact?
You can just send that to me. You and I have emails, I think, from the Learning Garden, and I can definitely get that to the right person. Great. I'm excited to learn what that is.
Yeah. No, you might not. But you could, you really, it'd be, it's a good thing.
Great. Anything else? We're excited to be back. All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
The gardens look great. The gardens are growing. Everything is just, yeah, going wonderful.
The RDC report you should have, I heard from Ashley, but she didn't submit a report yet. The Greenscape Commission report is on file. You should have it. No report from compliance, the public safety report you should have. That leaves us with financial. Dan?
Good evening, councilors. First, I would like to wish my daughter, IMPD Officer Kimberly Evans, a very happy birthday today. In August, we made our final payment on our trash trucks of $38,238. We filed 271 lien releases. We received in stormwater, $47,575.12. Sewer, $212,232.61. Trash, $76,476.03. The fund report for stormwater was $274,220.09. We transferred from utility to corporate, per budget, $142,196 pilot payment, and $353, $446,000 return on investment. We have been very busy working on the budget. We have entered it on the gateway. We have passed out your packets, and we are awaiting the salary ordinance. Jeff Peters has been consulted and affirmed that the revenue will support the budget that is proposed. Jeff Peters has been advising the city since the days of Mayor Wright, and I tend to be more conservative than him. I want to ensure the city remains not only solvent, but financially healthy. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens. It is a valuable resource to many. It still has not cost the taxpayer one penny since its inception. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers, who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt services, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. The city corporation bank account, at the end of August, had $4,113,801.45. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer, City of Beach Grove.
So, when will you have the salary ordinance ready?
The mayor's creating the salary ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So, as soon as he gets it to me, I'll send it out by email to the council.
You did it last year? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But not this year? Or is it the first year, then, that you're not doing it?
That's correct. Yep.
Why is that?
We have a little bit of conflict as far as the contracts between the police and fire, and I thought it would be better, since he negotiated the contract, to let him do it.
Is that a reason why the elected clerk treasurer doesn't do the ordinance, does he do the salary ordinance?
There's no reason for me to. We had an issue a few years back, where they were going to take it to the prosecutor's office, because something was deleted. So, no, I won't be doing it.
Any other questions for the clerk?
I do have one comment. I had a citizen call me at 4:30 this evening, and he wanted me to ask the council for some help. There is a oversized dump truck on Third Street between Main and Alton. He's told me that he's contacted the mayor, the police chief, several police officers, compliance, and nothing has been done about it. So, he's asking the council for help.
Are you familiar with that?
I'm sort of. I was told by the deputy chief. And according to the ordinance, it's the size, I haven't seen it. It's the size of the vehicle, and if it's a company vehicle, under a certain size, it fits within the ordinance, then it can park there. But I haven't personally seen it. I was told about it today.
The picture he showed me was more the size of, between a box truck and a semi truck. And it's parked on Third Street. You go by there when you leave. And he sent the picture of two different police officers that I know, and nothing's being done on it.
Has compliance?
Compliance has looked at it, and he's talked to compliance.
Has compliance, Mayor?
I have no clue.
If it fits within the ordinance, there's nothing we can do. But I haven't seen it, so I honestly don't know if it fits within the ordinance. There's a couple of other company trucks that people complain about, box trucks, that they fit within the ordinance, and there's nothing we can do. They have overnight parking. But if it doesn't fit, up to, I think it's 11:00 o'clock, then they would have to move it, if it's too big. But I honestly ought to look at it when we leave and see if we can do something.
It's not blocking traffic, or it's not a safety... Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know.
He says it's a safety issue from the standpoint of a kid running out in the street, people walking, elderly couples that walk up and down the street, and he says it's definitely a safety hazard, so...
There is a compliance division report in your packet. I was mistaking. I said they didn't put one in for this month, so sorry about that. That concludes committee report. There's no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. There's no new business this evening. That was done by design, because we're going to start in on budgets. The next council meeting is next Monday at 6:00 PM. I think you have the clerk handed out the packet that you need to go through, and we'll get one to Buddy and to Vito. And then, the agenda and the salary ordinance will be dropped off at your residence when it's ready. So, is there any other instructions on that, Dan?
As far as...
For the budget, as far as next Monday. First reading only.
First reading only. Public hearing. It's been advertised on the gateway, and other than that, it's ready to go.
All right. We'll go to council comments. Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Chris?
No comment.
I'm just really proud of the city for your initiative for the water, for Houston. I cannot imagine what it would be like to be refugees, the way people have been misplaced, some never to have a place to go back to. And the city really stepped it up. And Mayor, thank you so much for representing us, or another thing, something that's good about humanity. That's great. Thank you.
Dave?
No, just thank everybody for coming, and did learn a few things tonight, that I never knew before. It's kind of eye-opening. Other than that, that's all I got.
All right. Jim?
I want to thank you personally for your work, what you do here in the community. And thank you, everybody, for coming up.
Couple announcements, counsel. The city received the Oprah Planning Grant, $40,000. We got word that we received it. We haven't received it yet, so that would be coming. That was, and you paid 2,500, and the RDC paid 2,500 for the match. So, that is getting ready to come into play, and we expected that, so we'll just move forward. At the last meeting, Counselor Duffer, you've talked about the speakers and the microphone and all that stuff, and Dan would have some information on it, but we called Comcast the other day, and they come out, and they're looking at some alternatives or some things for us. But I think Dan had put something in the budget for, I don't remember.
I put $7,000 in there, because I don't know if that's high or low. At least it's a start.
But we're, we didn't, we're looking at it.
Okay.
But it was in the packet for, that's what that was for.
All right. Thank you.
There is a town hall meeting on the 19th of September. You should have the agenda in your packet. You're obviously welcome, encouraged to attend. There's eight agenda items we're talking about. It's at the Hornet Park Community Center at 7:00 PM. And the final thing tonight, counsel, is that I, in your packet, I put a note, "The mayor's dinner for the parks." October 7th at 5:00 PM, we will be hosting a mayor's dinner at the Hornet Park Community Center. This is a fundraiser for the Parks Department to raise money for parks' equipment and to offset costs for programming. We invite you and a guest to join us, at no cost to you, for an evening to learn more about our park system. Please, or ask VP me if you would like to attend. The schedule is 5:00 to 6:00 PM, open house, with several displays concerning recycling, greenways, foliage and trees, Greenscape Commission, parks' equipment, playground drawing, and a live small animal displays. These are all things that they do within the park system. 6:00 to 7:00 is dinner, catered by Napoli Villa, and then, at 7:00 PM, is the Parks Department presentation and sponsor recognition. So, you are invited to attend, you and one guest, and let me know if you are interested in attending. So, that concludes my remarks. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Well, I certainly can. It wasn't on the agenda, but I certainly would, I, I...
Real quick.
Okay. Well, the, our community-based initiative, I've either made sure I hand-delivered the surveys to all the council or mailed them, and I believe I've, most of you have acknowledged that you have them. But, you know, the community-based initiative is just to get all of our departments together, including schools and the school board, and it's just a very important thing to help move our city together in unity, and to, along with the mayor, and to be on the same page for where we're going and what our efforts are, and make things happen and be more progressive and be better for all of us in the city. Is there anything else, Diana, that you want to include on that, or?
Just that the surveys, whether you're for the community readiness initiative, West State is doing that for us, and they are doing it at any charge, which is usually somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 an hour. So, we're getting very guarded on it. So, if everybody on the council could get those in, Julie, Juan, Wood, as the milos and her almas, that, I mean, you get them filled out, you could take them to her, and you would kind of like to have them all in. Dave Terrell, the West State, said he'd like to have them all in by the end of this month. So, if we could fill out, it doesn't take long. I feel I'm not already, it doesn't take long. Doesn't take long to fill them out. We could add all the information into the report that is pulled together for us. If there are any questions about it, the mayor, I, one, would be happy to make a question. Any questions about this community readiness initiative and the mayor's community-based...
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I made said motion.
Second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. I'm not sure of the time on the phone, Dan.
I don't have any.
8:04.
8:04 PM. Thank you so much. We will see you next Monday in these chambers at 6:00 PM.